Thank you. Good afternoon.
I agree.
I'm now going to call the Wednesday, November 3rd meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners into session. We're going to re-read the executive order on remote participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by actual legislature, the order was extended until April 1st, 2022. This is a joint Zoom meeting in person and in Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone to rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Commissioners, I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to ask that we continue item number three, which is executive session until next week because our Labor Council could not be here this weekend. We just realized it, so we're going to have it next week. Okay, so if there's no objection, I'll take a motion to continue.
I'll move to continue the executive session when we second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be open next week's meeting with an executive session on labor matters. Number four, minutes of the open session meeting of October 27th, 2021 for approval.
See, okay. Yeah, anything, any change?
Last, last.
All right, I move approval of the minutes of October 27.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Number five, minutes of executive session of October 27th for approval, not to be disclosed at this time.
Right, I'll move approval of the executive session minutes of October 27.
Not to be disclosed at this time.
Right.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, public comment. Is there anyone in the wide world of Zoom that wants to have any public comment today? Director Cronin, do you have anyone that has a public comment? Have you heard from anyone?
No, um, no, sir.
Okay. No public comment. Appointments, we have none. Old business, we have none. Personnel matters, we have one at the agricultural school.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd move the notice for contention employment for Eileen Suzerskis.
I was wondering about that. That's close.
It's close, of Rentham, Mass., as a substitute instructor for the pay rate stated effective 11/3/21, and it's noted, this is a rehire.
Motion made and seconded to. Rehire a substitute teacher effective 11/3/2021 at the agricultural school. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number 10, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
I didn't.
I don't think I have.
I don't have those.
Phil, do you have those? I don't have them either.
Oh, I can read them up here, I guess. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, let's give it a shot. All right, I'd move, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, the following.
Absolutely.
I forgot this.
It's on the screen, Commissioner?
Twenty. I'm sorry?
It's on the screen.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much. We will do that. It's even better.
Can you make that bigger?
Good thing the eyes are still good.
Who would read that?
The eyes are still good. I'll give it a shot. I'm fine.
That's good.
Twenty-two dash, oh, oh.
There you go.
Okay, there you go. Twenty-two dash eighteen, payroll of the county in amount of $138,715, and I believe that's eighty cents.
Eighty-nine cents.
Oh, I missed that one, sorry. Eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
All right, second one, I will move warrant twenty-two dash one-eight, I believe that's a parentheses nine?
Correct.
This is my eye test, for payroll for the school in the amount of $409,658.83.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote, three to zero.
And last one, I'll move for November 1st, '22, the expense of the county warrant in the amount of $131,126.74. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And you passed the test there.
I guess.
Good enough. Always good enough. We're going to skip 11 until 1:30, which is a bid opening on some call of course work. We'll go to number 12, contractor wags today. We have none. We're going to skip number 13. We are going to do technology in the Commissioner's office. We have Mark with us, but we're going to go to 14, legislative update. I think it's Bill Buckley for the legislative update.
Sure, I'll be right back.
What'd he say? He'd be right down?
He'd always went there.
You can do it from there.
Correct.
Okay.
Tough sign these off.
This is a legislative update on some various bills from Bill.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
They are in, oh, yes.
Happy school committee person at Walpole today, huh?
Very much so.
Good news last night.
I get first, the school in 60 years, not bad. Excellent. I do have one bill for you all in hard copy for the legislative update. I'll be brief. We had our last legislative update at the end of the summer, on July, so there are about five matters that we are keeping tabs on, so this is just sort of a brief, every few months, update on where we stand. The principal legislative priority of not only the Norfolk County Commission, but the Mass. Association of County Commissioners is H. 2906, An Act Relative to Deeds Excise by Mr. Galvin of Canton, who was generous and kind enough to file it for us. Again, this year it's a refile. As you know, this is a bill that we collectively came to an agreement with Bristol, Plymouth, and our other county partners as the compromise singular bill relative to registry of deeds fees that will generate additional revenue for the committee, for the counties. The bill currently has 25 co-sponsors. We added one. We were able to get Jay Barrows, who has, is from Mansfield, but represents Foxborough in Norfolk County, so we are claiming him as far as our legislative people. We have been able to successfully lobby, so he brought it up to 25. It is still in the Joint Committee on Revenue, which is chaired by Mark Husak, who's the rep from Braintree. They did have a meeting. We worked closely with Brett Hoffman, who I know Commissioner Stady has a relationship with, in Chairman Galvin's office, to make sure we got testimony in. The chairman is looking at the bill favorably. It has not been released yet, however, it can be at any time. It has gone through the constitutional obligatory process of having a hearing, so that could move. It's really, we, I believe, are looking at it in terms of it being a legislative vehicle, so that the language is in there. It can be brought up at the end of session. It can be added to perhaps a budget or a bond bill as well, but it's a very important kind of piece in our legislative profile. Another bill we are following in the, it's with kind of cautious concern, is Senate 2174, An Act Relative to Large-Scale Solar Energy Installations on Agricultural Recreational Land of the Commonwealth by Senator Feeney of Foxborough. That bill has not moved either, which is a good thing, because it is detrimental to our solar efforts. It remains in the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. It has not been heard yet. It has to be heard by about February, just a date in February, in the second year of session, that all bills must be heard by. It only has one co-sponsor, Rep. McMurtry of Dedham. He's filed a mirror bill in the House, 3346. Both of those bills have been placed on Mass. Climate Actions list of Bad for the Environment bills, so they, we continue to believe have no traction. We've been working closely with Tim Cronin from Waymouth, who's a part of the Environmental Action League as well on this, so we feel strongly that we're in a good position with that bill. An additional bill that we have been following is H. 2160, which you have before you, An Act Requiring Automatic External Defibrillators in Norfolk County Public Buildings. That was filed by Denise Scarlett, who's the rep from Needham. She represents Needham, Dover, and half of Medfield within Norfolk County. She is the sole sponsor. That bill did have its hearing. It was reported out favorably by the chair. We found out a few weeks ago that they were polling members, and it now sits in the Bills and Third Reading Committee. Bills and Third Reading is the sort of control and stopgap committee later in the process, like Ways and Means, before the bill has to get to the floor. Bills have to be heard three times. That is because it's an arcane colonial process where before we had Xerox machines, they would literally read the bill three times on the floor, which is its way of getting a public vetting. Chairwoman Garlick is the chair of the committee that it is in. Many, many bills die at the third reading process, perhaps two-thirds of them, from my experience in the legislature, so it being that far along in the process is not necessarily a concern. I did have a conversation with Chairwoman Garlick's staff probably three months ago about the bill. It was filed at the behest of Reg. O'Donnell. If this is a refile, it also went through the process last term as well, and was not passed into law, but the bill, it's only a few paragraphs, but in summary, it would require the County Commission to put automatic external defibrillators in every county building, which is a unfunded mandate, obviously, from the state, which could be concerning, but also something we may want to look at long-term, as something we do with the budget process, with capital in the future. The final paragraph of the bill entrouts any person who is utilizing those AEDs with the goods à la loi, which is pretty standard. That's most bills of that nature that augment emergency response equipment have that final carryall piece about the goods à la loi in there. So it has sort of moved forward. It's obviously the Chairwoman's bill. It is now on her committee.
Do we have those in that course already? No?
There are still in District Court. I believe there may be some, but I'm not sure about all of them.
Okay, I don't want to interrupt you.
Please leave your message for.
One minute.
Oh, good afternoon. This is Chris Goldsmith. I'm calling from the right.
I'll get that.
Good.
Excellent. Okay, ten to two to one. So anyway, we continue to, we continue to monitor its progress. If it ends up on the calendar, we will let you know, but that, again, it is something that deals directly with the operations of Norfolk County, so we wanted to put it on your radar. As far as how redistricting affects legislation, Rep. Ayers of Quincy now represents the physical piece of Quincy, the distance golf course. Had a great conversation with Sean Costello, a fellow school community member from Marshfield. He was longtime chief of staff about our golf course playground project. Rep. Ayers is excited to work with us in the spring around getting, filing earmarks to the budget for additional funding for that project. We're also probably going to work closely with Rep. Driscoll from Milton, who has the preponderance of the land of the golf course, as Commissioner Collins likes to tell us, most of the golf course is in Milton, and so hopefully we can, it's like two-thirds. It's more than that, maybe. I think there's only one or two holes in Quincy.
All the apparatus, the brain collar, the license, the food.
Exactly.
The plastic in the air.
Well, as far as earmarks, we always like to make the largest effort possible and loop in as many people as possible, so we're excited to work with them. That budget process generally begins in April. You'll have consensus revenue in late December, early January. The government's budget will come out right before April vacation. The House will have their budget and the amendment process, which is our first bite at the apple as far as seeking funding. The Senate generally does their budget the week before Memorial Day. It's in a perfect world wrapped up by June. This year, obviously, it ran much later due to COVID, but that, there are two opportunities for us to lobby and seek additional state funding for that project. So because this Chairman Ayers's movement, I think, is important. And my final item is just to be aware of, and I don't want to steal the director's thunder in his ARPA report, but just to be aware of the fact that the House did take up their version of an ARPA bill, which was $3.82 billion. It had a number of investments for dealing with the mass and cash issue with the temp fillers there, 500 million for the unemployment trust, 200 million to small business, 12 million for Afghan veterans and Afghan refugee resettlements, and as far as the state's portion, as we talked about before, there are kind of four buckets of ARPA money. The state still has $2.4 billion unallocated. Now, that process, the reason I think it is important to follow that process is during the ARPA bill allocation process, $174 million of amendment filed. I know my community of Walpole had $100,000 earmark from Rep. Rogers for downtown infrastructure. There were, I just, you know, kind of my own area. There were housing, sewer and water needs in Norwood that were in there as well, and in conversations we've had, we had one yesterday with the advisory board member from Norfolk. I was speaking with Jim Johnson, the Walpole Town Manager, yesterday as well. Many of the towns are sort of waiting to see what they can get through the state pile of money before they move forward, really earnestly looking at their own local appropriations and their own local requests to us. And so while this doesn't affect the program we have, it may affect how each town comes to us seeking projects. So many, many communities, especially the suburban ones, which I've been speaking to a great deal, not as much as District Court, of course, have kind of taken this wait-and-see approach. Let's see what we can get out of the state first, and that's going to color how they move forward. So the Senate will now take up the bill, probably before Thanksgiving. They haven't set a firm date, but those are the sort of smoke signals about how they're going to proceed, at least by the end of the year. And if that's finalized, they'll know what kind of projects will come off from the local people's menu, and I think then we'll probably, in a cascade effect, see an uptick in ARPA applications to us. That's all I have for the five sort of points of interest we've been following. Happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability, or get you the answers if I can.
Any questions of Bill?
Thanks, John Bill.
Thanks, too.
Thank you very much.
A couple of few, if I may.
Sure.
Really quick. So just, I want to get a better understanding of the ARPA bill. We can talk later.
Sure.
So the state has their own ARPA bill?
Yes.
And there, is it under the same guidelines or restrictions?
Correct.
As our ARPA bill?
Correct.
Okay, so it's possible it's a community, any community, could utilize the ARPA money from the state for a water project, and then piggyback with us for the water project as well.
The only difference would be, you know, the, obviously, communities get their own direct money.
Yeah.
There's money that we have. The state, the state legislature worked quickly when the ARPA bill was passed to file languages said the House and Senate should have appropriating authority, that a large portion of it would be subject to appropriation, so that this process now is the only manner, I believe, in which sort of individual town projects could be, could utilize state funding.
So I guess, is it basically they file a bill, the local rep?
No, it would be. It would be an earmark to the bill.
Like a form of aid?
Yeah, so that was the $174 million that was attached to this bill and earmarks. That's where local projects would reside, so.
Okay.
You got to get it in either the House and the Senate's version of the bill, and then through the conference committee process.
It's an interesting question, Commissioner, if I could, too, because it sets up the dynamic that explains why we've, the counties in general have received far fewer applications in their respective portals of the state. It indicates that many communities are probably stepping back, waiting to see what the earmark process looks like, how that's going to impact their strategies going forward.
Right.
And now knowing, hopefully by November 17th, I think, when the session ends, what they can expect to receive. If the earmarks are going to align with projects like you just decided, described, it will easily complement their application package to us. There's also a theory out there that this earmarking and the funds that communities will use through that process may yield maybe a surplus our way. In other words, communities may have found a path to funding their projects with state funding, and they won't need as much county. We'll figure that all out by the time our program starts to sunset, but the state money is definitely augmenting the county projects.
Okay, I can talk to you about the other things later, but one suggestion I could respectfully suggest, I think it's a good idea to have defibs in all the buildings. We might want to, either we're going to get mandated, or it's maybe.
They are in some, and for some.
Right, so maybe what you could do is.
I don't disagree.
For you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to have to pay.
Have John or Bill look into, what would be the cost to put those things in all our buildings if we did it? If we did it in stages, you know, probably phase it in, but it'd be nice to find out what's the cost to buy one, install one, and then where are they at? I know some of the main core buildings. I know some are. I think it's, I guess, this might be mandated, unfunded, or it might be something we may want to tackle ourselves, but I think it's a good idea.
I think there's one at the golf course, too.
Yeah, I think I saw one. You're right. If there is, no, there is.
We should get our arms around it, especially since the wording of this bill is clear.
I'm sure the school has one. The Aggie School has one. They must, but I'm saying, so it might be a good thing.
They have to be at a.
Well, as you said, what about the school? You have a lot of buildings. You have to have, but in each building, it would be one per, two buildings or?
Usually they have like one on the main building. That's like, the Canton High, we have three buildings, but we have one right outside the office. They have like one right there, but again, you're pretty spread out. Maybe it depends on.
But I was just, I'm sorry, I didn't have a couple minutes.
I need this.
I can, yeah, I can just answer that really. I believe it says every building.
I think it said every building.
Every building, wow.
A public building under supervision of the Norfolk County Commission shall have on the premises one automatic external.
At least one. Okay, there you go.
Well, a public building.
Yeah, but.
The first part of that.
So we mainly to try and, maybe to clarify the language.
To your point, if, you know, if the preponderance of our sites have it, it, the case could be made that this bill is now moot and unneeded.
Yeah, yeah. And so. Something to think about.
Absolutely.
Find out what the cost would be and do that.
Athletic, there has to be one up at the athletic conference, that's required.
That's right, too. You're right. So you'd have one.
Three years ago.
That's right, too. That, oh, like the hockey rigs have them?
Yep.
And things like that. That was special legislation, perhaps even for that. So maybe just maybe get an inventory. How many of our buildings have defibs, and then what would the cost be to put in, you know, a few and air and air?
We can collect that and report back.
Yeah, that's all. The rest I can talk to you later.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions about legislation or any other matters?
Thank you.
We're going to do one more quick one here and.
We have a bid opening 1:30.
We have a right to Nancy at 1:30.
Yeah.
Number 15, request from the Crenshaw Construction Company for rental of the registry deeds back parking lot from 11/8/2021 to 12/8/2021. In your packet, Commissioner, is a schematic of the registry parking lot. Director Cronin is going to explain this, and I thought it was required if we want to do it. Not do it, but it's a worthy task. Go ahead, Director Cronin.
Can you guess? Thank you.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioner. So this matter involves someone interested in renting 40 spaces behind the registry of deeds for a period of one month. The request is for Monday through Friday. This is Crenshaw Construction. This is as a result of some work being done on an adjacent lot. The agreement would call for, I believe it's $10 per spot for the one-month period of time, and the funds will be directed.
Per day?
$10 per day, per spot.
Good, okay.
For business hours, Monday through Friday, for one month. Those funds will be deposited into the county's general fund. When normally we talk about the parking lot at the registry, because a lot of different people have asked about it, so, yeah, I would suggest that we reach out to the register to see if he has any objection to it before we enter into an agreement.
I have no, we've done this before, correct?
Oh, sure, lots of times, but with different companies.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I think we have to check with the register. We can sit on it because it's next Monday if we're going forward.
When's it beginning? Next Monday?
It will be eight.
Yeah.
Today.
Tell you what, how about if we take a vote, John?
Thank you.
Continued upon notice. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, with those contingencies.
Approving it continued upon the recommendation from the register.
That a motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
And do we have any other discussion? Okay, our motion made and seconded to allow the rental of 40 spaces at the rear of the registry parking lot for one-month period due to construction on the adjacent parcel, pending discussion with the register of deeds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nancy, please. It's 1:30, and we have an item on the agenda for the golf course, folks.
This for the?
It's number 11, bid opening for golf course renovation, I think.
Yes.
It's 1:30 by Mike Kilometer calendar here. We're in good shape.
Oh, wait a second.
I, we have two bids received. This is from Weed and Feed, doing business as DHT Golf Services. They have bid $86,730. Alternate one hole 10 bunker refreshment at $8,000. Alternate two hole 11 tee drainage improvements at $3,175. All their unit prices are included. They're out of Plymouth, Mass. Next, I have Bowridge Excavating out of Pingham, Mass. They have bid $65,966. Alternate one hole 10 bunker refurbishment at $8,400. Alternate number two hole 11 tee drainage improvements at $3,060. Unit prices there. Both bids are intact. I will make publicly, send them down to Kyle. Both vendors are known for us. They're the two that have done all the work on the course previously, so then we'll see if they're thinking budget.
Very good.
Thank you, Nancy. We'll take it under advisement.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Okay, on the golf course improvements, I have a motion seconded to take it under advisement to be acted upon on a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to remind us so we could keep our eye on it, because time keeps going by.
Mr. Chairman, what about, what about the ones we did last week?
I suppose that's a very, a very good question.
She's working on those.
These were what, the roof of?
Right, the roof.
I'm very interested in the roof, and also.
The dead roof?
Well, the district what?
District court.
Okay, the dead of district court. That work is not intended to go forward until the spring anyways.
Yeah, but we need to vote it because they have hit materials and.
Correct.
But if we come with that money in order, because there's always something missing.
Right, right, so we don't want to delay.
That's correct. I made a promise. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Number 13, discussion in Abraham's Report Recommendation for Data Processing Information Technology as it concerns the Commissioner's office. We have Mark McDonald here with us, up at that, Senator McDonald.
Right.
Good afternoon. We have some points here we're going to look at.
Good day, Mr. Chairman. Introduce this. Mark and I are, worked together today to present this matter. Mark's put together his response to the Abraham's Report Recommendations found in your packet, Section 10. The particular report by the Abraham's Report included certain recommendations which Mark did not list in his report, so I'll read them briefly so you understand the gist of each one, and then he'll go through his recommendations behind those in order to kind of expedite the discussion. Didn't think it was important to cut and paste the entire Abraham's Report into his piece. You can do that.
Okay, right.
So there are a total of 10 items.
I'm seeing.
Eight, I'm going to beg your pardon. And following the same script that the treasurer put forth a week ago, IT wishes to give you feedback on each of the findings. The first is the current and future systems of Norfolk County. So Mark, if you want to get into your recommendations on that.
Yeah, so on the current and future systems, I agree with the findings in the Abraham's Report. My comments on it is that, you know, the quote from the Abraham's Report is that the county must continue to make significant allocations for technology equipment and infrastructure refreshes to keep up with advances. And as the county IT director, our department adheres to a five-year refresh on all of our PC and server equipment. So we're consistent with that, staying current.
In addition to that, the commissioners may recall, the county recently invested almost $100,000 in new server technology, infrastructure improvements associated with technology, and that was the security in this building, the new Tyler cloud service and the upgrade to Microsoft.
A few weeks ago.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right. So that's consistent.
We're right. We're following the recommendation that we maintain some level of investment in our technology. The next one is under staffing. In this area, the registry had a number of different areas for staffing, recognizing that Mark's space is relatively limited because he's a, he's a department one reporting to me, but one of the. Um, but uh, one of the items that Mark and I talked about was that over the next several months, it's important that we develop a, a partnership with a peer to help us in cases where Mark may be incapacitated or unavailable. Somebody who can fill a gap or answer a question when he's on vacation and so forth. So we're gonna be looking to reach out to a peer to find somebody who can uh just be that person, the helpline. In the event that Mark's unavailable, little redundancy.
Hmm.
But beyond that, the staffing piece is put forward. Um, the uh, the Abraham's Report, as you know, includes staffing descriptions from the Registry of Deeds as well as the schools. Um, but at this point, I think the best thing we can approach is something resembling a redundancy plan. And we're gonna move in that direction.
Now, you didn't voyage into the school or the registry, right? Or you just reached the response? You put, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, no, right. So this, I'm, I'm looking at it just from the county.
From the county itself, okay, okay.
Okay, the, the next item is software. Um, the Abraham's Report went into expansive description of the high school software, um, certainly the Registry of Deeds software, the Brown Tech software. Um, Mark, if you want to just briefly describe the county space on on, on the findings of the Abraham's Report here.
Sure. Um, so I, I agree with the findings. Um, I, I did want to add that some of uh there are some other software programs uh that I run as administrator um that have to deal with the uh, the admin console for our phone system. Uh, for our unit trends backup system, which backs up all the county data. Um, the Amazon cloud, which also um backs up a copy of the county data, so we have redundancy. Uh, the Barracuda email archive, which keeps a copy of all incoming and outgoing uh county emails. And then our security software, uh malware bytes, which is an anti-malware software. Mimecast uh is our email security. Uh, Symantec is our antivirus. And uh Zeit Cell is our firewall. And those are all different layers of security for protecting the county's data. Questions on that?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Isn't that right?
Absolutely.
Um, so cyber security is a big topic. You're into it all the time.
Mm-hmm.
But in terms of our security, just for us.
Yes.
So, you know, in layman's terms, I'm not as sophisticated as you. Are you saying we have several types of defenses to protect our information? And is it like, sort of like going from like a a moat to the castle door, to the castle keep? Is it a series of things like that?
Exactly.
Okay, so each these kick in?
Level.
Yeah.
And then daily, we back up all the data.
Yeah.
Uh, to a device and to the cloud.
Yeah.
So that we have redundancies. So if, uh, God forbid, there ever was an issue, we can recover with, with that data.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, tough question. I'll look for an answer.
Sure.
Just a thought. It'd like be something I'd like to know, and maybe all of us. Maybe at some point through Director Cronin, I'd like to know, how many uh, say, cyber attacks have, have we had, maybe in the past month or even the past year? And then how successful have we been? I don't need an answer right now.
Sure.
I mean, it's not fair to you. But I'm always, everybody's making a large issue about cybersecurity. I'd like to know what we do, you know, if our system is the way it should be. And I'm not looking to point fault. I'm not. I'm just looking to protect us, make sure we're doing a good job. You know what I'm saying? That's all. So, um, you know, I know, I realize it's someone else with a lot more knowledge to protect my own system. And we have a couple. So this is actually good to see. So like, we have three or four defenses?
Mm-hmm.
That kind of, is that industry standard, Mark? Is that?
Uh, I think so. Yeah, I think that's pretty industry, you know, we've got.
When you talk to other counties or entities, is that what they seem to do?
Right. Everyone's got a malware protection. Everyone's got uh a virus protection. Uh, the firewall also comes with this, a, a second set of those softwares built in. So it's everything is being screened double time before it gets to us.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, so.
Look, is that something you could look at maybe and get back to the board?
Well, I can look, I can look at that because the, what happens with these attacks is they, they hit the firewall.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's almost like they just automatically.
Yeah.
People just send them to I P addresses. So I can show you a list of of hits that we've got on the firewall that have been denied based on our security software.
That's fine. That'd be helpful, I think.
It's a, it's actually a great question.
I have the same similar question.
It's a great question, and I think if you're not informed, you'd be, you'd be surprised at how, how frequently firewalls are are attempted to be um broken. Um, it's in the thousands as far as I'm concerned, because it's all electronic, as Mark said. There are schemes that are set up to probe and poke at a firewall constantly, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And if anything got through, then the malware goes back and they re-engineer how to get through and what to do next. So it's a, it's very sophisticated, but it's um it's a lot more active than you would think.
Yep.
And we'll be happy to get that, that information from you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
I have a question along the same lines, Mark.
Sure.
I know what I think you're responsible for and what the registry is responsible for and what the school is responsible for. Are you responsible for the treasurer's office?
Yes.
Are you responsible for the retirement board?
Uh, no.
Because I'm aware for a couple of reasons. Parac recently sent out to member boards in this area that a, a local board was, not us. A social board was, they got to the second step. Some security breach. It was, it was it was not successful, but they got beyond the first one.
Right.
And it, actually, that, the Parac memo, which went to all retirement boards, went to ours, went to them, went to Quincy Milton. Highlighted a recent attempt, and that made me think, is, is, the retirement board is separate and distinct. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't, I don't want to be, all right.
Good to know that.
Yeah, and while they were on top of it, it was uh, and again, it was not successful, but they got beyond whatever the first stage is. You're talking to a real layman here when it comes to this stuff. And the bank and the company.
In layman's terms, was that a good analogy? And I'm not trying, is that how it works? Like, you have the first fight.
You just fire them against the rocks?
So is it, does it make sense for us to even have another layer? Or do you think we don't need any?
Sometimes they can, they can interfere with one another.
That's what's in the aspect, right?
So.
Like if you had, you know, they could counteract each other.
Yeah, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't do like two antivirus because they can, you know, they can they can actually cause an opening, so.
Okay, yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
But just to, you know, we, we run ours through the cloud, so it's updated constantly.
Yeah. Let's keep it straight.
Uh, the next item is uh four network email and internet connections. Uh, I think what the Abraham's Report was drawing out here was the distinction between physically three different networks. Uh, the schools, the county, and the registry each operate as silos. Um, Mr. Abraham's goes into some descriptions on phone systems, which I think Mark will address in a minute. Um, the findings overall are that they found that um many registry employees don't have email addresses or in an access. Registry operates the county phone system, which I think Mark's going to address in a minute. That has to be cleaned up. Uh, and that the Aggie has its own separate network, email and internet connection. Um, while the registry and the county share a common email system. So Mark, if you wanted to get into that piece.
Um, sure. Um, again, I would agree with, with the findings. Um, uh, that there's there's currently no substantial collaboration um between the departments, but um, that's not a new thing. It really hasn't. Um, from the county's uh side, there's not been a lot of there's not been a lot of overlap. I've pretty much been the only one in the last eighteen years who's worked on any of the systems here. Um, there was overlap as far as the, the budget was handled by someone else before I started doing it three years ago. Uh, but none of the, you know, the hands-on I T work. Uh, and I agree with their findings that, that they feel that all uh all three of the departments are being well-run. Um, and I agree that the, you know, the, the high school uh should be separate. They've got a very, um, a different set of technologies that they're running there that are kind of specific to the school. And I think um, I think that if, is to be called consolidation between the uh, the county and the registry. Um, I think it would kind of turn out to be just the way it's working now, where people who are familiar with the systems that they've been working on for you know, numbers of years will can, you know, if an issue came up in a collaboration, you'd send the person who you know, who knows how to work with that equipment. So I don't think there, you know, if there was a consolidation, I think there'd be kind of a you know, there'd be a separation within the consolidation, if, if you understand what I mean there. Um, it's just kind of it's easier to support something you're familiar with than to go into something you're not familiar with and have to learn exactly what to do.
So even if there was a consolidation, they would, they would keep their type of email setup? They'd have our email?
So, uh, this, no, I'm talking, I'm, I'm just talking about in general.
Yeah.
You know, the, this, like, for example, we're running uh Budget Sense here, and, and I've worked with that for a long time, where people at the school or the registry have not worked with it at all, uh, as far as supporting it. And then the registry is running Brown Tech, which is a program that is specific to that building and, and the people who are working there. I haven't had a lot of uh experience with it just a little long time ago. And the school doesn't either. So I, I think if there, you know, an issue came up with Brown Tech, person who would be working on it is, is the person who's at the registry right now. I don't think you would send in me or someone from the school to do anything there because it just, it would, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big learning curve. Support that.
Okay. Well, that opens the door to the question, though, regarding redundancy across the board. And we were talking about redundancy earlier about Mark's services, but is there adequate redundancy for operating these systems outside their, their specific silos, right? I mean, that's, that's a question we should ask all of the technology people. For example, who knows how to do what you do? Right? That, that's a, that's a void that we're gonna have to work towards. We're gonna get on, get, get done under item five, which is professional development and, and start to bring somebody closer to your world so that they can function and understand how you administer your, your various software. But I think the question has to be extended to other areas as well. Redundancy is a big part of technology management. All right, so all set on that one?
Yeah.
Number five, professional development. Um, the Abraham's Report is calling out the fact that all three directors indicated they were comfortable with that level of professional development. Most of the training they receive via online videos can combine with on-the-job experience. And that they can attend workshops when necessary, and they recommend that professional development funds be available for technology to assure that all the professional staff is properly trained to do their jobs. Um, Mark, if you want to touch on this one briefly, it is an important part, but I think it goes also to the need to explore cross-training opportunities as well.
Um, so I agree with the findings. Um, uh, you know, from my point of view, as things have arisen, that I need to uh, to have knowledge of, I've just taken courses, uh, whether it be with Microsoft, for example. Um, a few years ago, we went to Hyper V, which is uh virtual servers. Um, and I needed to know how to administer that. So, you know, I took a, a, a five-day course um in that particular aspect of uh of Microsoft Server. So, and I've done that with some side of security training. Um, and as, you know, as needs, need, needs arise, I, you know, I just foresee that continuing to happen.
Who paid for that training fee?
Uh, that came out of the budget.
Do you think there's sufficient funds in the budget looking at, when we look at that for training? That's something we're gonna focus on, right? So, flag it. Just, just something to think about. That's all. I think I'm a big believer in education, obviously. And I think you can't do enough. And what John is saying, our director, about cross-training?
Yep.
Good idea, too. So, so we want to look at that. Make sure it's sufficient. Thank you.
Sure.
Number six is comparative costs. This is an area that the Abraham's Group um basically had a null outcome on. They declared that uh Norfolk County had no comparative data to Bristol and Plymouth. And then furthermore, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education reports uh were not helpful for technological comparison of costs with the schools. So they did not have any valid means to measure technology costs. And so we, we omitted number six as a recommendation. Number seven would be security. Um, they declared that they were not security experts. However, um, they, they mentioned all three directors um mentioned security is an issue. Uh, schools are always concerned about protecting confidential financial data from student hacking attempts. The departments have internal backup service. Mark just talked about that. Some of the security does. And it was also mentioned that there was a need for security training for employees. Uh, it is apparent there is an area of concern as the Abraham Report calls out. And uh, to that end, they made recommendations to cloud-based systems for uh Budget Sense, also known as Tyler Technologies. Brown Tech, as Mark talked about at the registry, and to have a system of uh organizational controls for cybersecurity audits. Mark, if you want to touch on these items briefly, this is an area of great importance.
Sure. Um, I agree with the uh security findings. Um, I think that uh any department um I T department should be concerned uh with what's going on with security threats. And now, we, we here at the county try to keep on top of that. Uh, I spoke about the multiple layers of uh security uh software that we're running. Um, as well as some of the, you know, backups that we're doing to protect our data. Um, and we also have a uh, uh, we have a software series called No Before uh which has programs to train the employees on um safe use of the internet to protect themselves and the county from getting unwanted uh emails. And I certainly agree with the move to infinite visions. I'm in the process currently of, of uh providing them with an audit of what we're running currently, so we can get started on the installation of the software for this. Uh, it's gonna offer us uh backup through them. Um, and the, another layer of security through their, through their system. So um, looking forward to getting that up and running as soon as possible. Um.
One, one item in this space that I want to draw the attention to um, uh Commissioners is a recommendation for the county to have a system and organizational control cybersecurity audit done. The Abraham's Report didn't go into that space, and you alluded to this earlier, Commissioner Stadia, about whether or not the county is uh particularly fortified the way a best practice would allude to. Mark's, Mark is a technology expert. He's prepared the county for um, you know, software incursions and software breaches and so forth. But perhaps an external security, cybersecurity audit uh may be uh something you would want to explore in the future, especially see data that comes back, Commissioner, that indicates we're a prime target for cybersecurity incursions or something along that line. Um, and broaden the view into our entire network to make sure that Norfolk County is as fortified as we think we can be. That's something to think about. Um, it's a critical area, and I think I agree with the Commissioner that it's something we should not.
Okay, let's get the data first.
Hmm.
Let's see if there really is a problem, but never, never hurts to be ahead of the thing, too. Can I follow up on that by just saying their recommendation? Abraham Report says uh we should review the security rating of Tyler Technology in physician's parent. Who would be reviewing that? Them, you, or again, maybe an external audit? What's, what's your thought on that? I know you said you agree with it, but what, what's that mean, review the security rating of Tyler Technology?
Well, I think that um I looked into how to, how to do that.
Sure, okay.
And I, I don't have the answer to that question yet, but I am looking into it. I know that their system that we're moving to
Hmm.
is uh running on the A W S uh Amazon backbone, which, you know, guarantees like ninety-nine point nine percent security of your data when it's on there.
Uh-huh.
But I will also be looking into this because, you know, some of this is gonna be running on their services as well.
Good. I mean, you'll check that out as well. Again, cybersecurity, yeah.
Yes.
So we want to make sure we have the best possible system in place. And again, if we need to, like, as Director's saying, too, maybe do an independent audit or whatever, but that's down the road, right? Thank you. And I'm not trying to put you in the spot.
No, that's fine.
Just, you know.
That's a good question. Well, again, we're opening up and we're, yeah, that's a good question. Don't think it leads to another.
Yeah.
Uh, the final item, item eight is consolidation. Um, the Abraham's Report, as we mentioned, we do the registry, the agricultural school, the county for uh possible consolidations uh in this area. The Abraham's Report had a number of different comments, expansive comments about the county and the registry consolidation. Um, Mark will give you his opinion on the consolidation from our perspective, but I think when we receive the register, his opinion will be something to be put in a different place with consideration because they're different opinions. Uh, but go ahead, Mark, if you want to dive into that.
Sure. Um, so I agree with the with the report's findings on consolidation. Now, in the interview portion, you know, and one can can envision that there are significant differences between networks, applications. And that's going to make consolidation challenging. So if we go that route, we certainly need to be looking at careful planning of a consolidation. You know, assignment of duties, again, talking about having people working on, you know, if if we haven't done cross-training, having people working on systems that they're familiar with. And the resources that we would need to ensure a successful consolidation.
It's of note that the Abraham's report does not recommend consolidation after study with the Norfolk County Cultural School IT department. That's found on page ten dot seven of their report.
And then, yeah, and then, you know, I'm I'm a little biased. I've worked on on the network here for eighteen years. And I feel that we have a robust and secure IT department. And I feel that if, you know, if we decide to consolidate and we have the personnel in both locations to make it successful and we'd embrace it. Is it? Thank you, Mark.
One quick follow up. So you you feel, I'm not getting into it today, but you don't think that the school should be consolidated under what?
I think the school is so different. Yeah, I think it's the school is so different. You know, in what they're doing, you know, they're using it in classrooms and it it's a whole, it's a whole kind of specific software that they use that would, you know, it could be done, but I think, you know, I think, yeah, I think it would.
Yeah, most towns do that, too. They have a school side and you have a municipal side, you know, but yeah.
The schools, like many, and I'm sure you know this, Commissioner Stadies, are Google-based internet platform. They do a lot of cloud-based learning solutions. So
Oh, yeah.
that we don't, we're not in that because we don't, we don't do that kind of computing. But and it's also, you know, Wi-Fi intensive, their student base and their needs are a lot different than the professional user here at the county. So there's some incompatibilities there. That's not to say it couldn't be done. It's just not easily done, given the limited staff. But I think what the what the report did is it looked more closely at the registry as more of a bureaucratic symmetry. Both organizations are public organizations that operate in government footing with professional settings. They they could go into some detail here regarding the possibility of consolidation. Mark and I talked about really what is the place for us to to state today about whether or not we should do it. I I think it's best said that we stand ready to do it. If the commissioners vote to consolidate technology under the county commissioners, it'll get done. It'll get done right. But that's a choice that you'll make after you hear from the register.
Right.
And and consider the pros and cons, so.
So quick follow up, Tyler Technology and cybersecurity attacks.
Yes.
If you could get some for to us.
Sure.
In a couple of weeks.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Sir Mark, at this point?
Mark, nice job.
Nice job.
Thanks, Peter.
I don't have any at this point either. Well, I'm not taking this on advisor. This is our second.
Yeah, I'm not taking it, Joe. One more second.
Oh, sure.
So what we did last time, when the when the treasurer came in, we talked about, he he gave us an outline as of his response to the Abraham's group report. And you've just done the same. I really appreciate it. Nice job. And when we left the meeting, we kind of left it saying, so if you could look at what's been recommended and where you think we can go, if if you could pick off the parts that you agree with, maybe we can move forward with those items as as an easy go, you know, that, okay, we agree with with these things. So let's see if we can implement those things. And if there are other things that you'd like to have done, if you could kind of prioritize a list of of what items you would like to get done, that would be helpful, too.
Sure.
And I think it's understood. And it's funny, a lot of people have looked at the Abraham's Group report and they seem to think that oh, this is all we're going to do. And that's not so. The Abraham's Group report is is a recommendation to us of the way they viewed things. And that doesn't mean that their view is something we will adopt in the end. And so we're taking great advice from you and from all the other parties that that are giving the giving us their recommendations. I mean, you work with this every day.
Right.
I I don't work in IT. Dick has more knowledge of this than probably Joe and I combined times two.
As much.
But he would tell you, but he would tell you it's not much. And you're in this every single day. So you know what can work, what couldn't work, what maybe we shouldn't do, or maybe what we should do and and why we should do it. So if you can kind of prioritize what you think we should do and and why, that'd be great. Maybe you can report back to the director on that.
Sure.
Good answer.
So sorry about that, Joe. I kind of went on, huh?
Yeah, it's good to know. I think it's a good model, model in all of all the presentations we have. That's a good point. Good. You're off the hook, pal.
All right.
Thank you.
One second. Mr. Chairman, I noted that Registrar O'Donnell had a conflict on the day before Thanksgiving.
I was bringing that up on my time.
Oh, okay, because I am looking at the schedule. I give a couple of movements, maybe alternatives.
All right, number sixteen, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, including our first applicant.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very, very. Bit of good news to report. I got informed that the first applicant into the Norfolk County portal has made application. That is the town of Dover. They are looking for funds associated with a public safety infrastructure tower that has been compromised and broken. It's a critical piece of infrastructure that they believe fits under the public health emergency. So that particular item will be working its way through that audit cycle that I've described. And there's a potential you may see that item before you for potential reimbursement as early as next week. So you may also find some pleasure in knowing that although Plymouth County went live before we did, Plymouth County has not yet received any applications to their portals. So this is the first county with an application.
Get some mileage out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And, you know, back to my earlier point, there may be a reason that many communities are kind of pausing to get in with their applications to the to the item that Mr. Buckley mentioned earlier. I've had that on my agenda to speak about, which is the state's action on ARPA. Clearly, the counties were in front of the state managing ARPA, but they're caught up and they've since advanced this bill with significant earmarks, and that will impact how things shake out for us. So good news all around. I will keep you all informed as things shake out. But there was a tremendous, there's been a tremendous amount of activity with the communities getting their credentials. I think we're nearly full, but we still have a few to go. I had a couple of conversations with Wellesley yesterday and some other communities just trying to clean up some questions they have. Things are going along quite well. And I, again, I, at the risk of sounding like a cheerleader here, I have to say Clifton Larson has been great, great, great to work with. They are incredibly responsive. They jump on things. They help me resolve issues before they get get too big. A pleasure to work with.
That's good. Yeah, that's great.
No, they're they're really good, Dick. So we're very happy on that. Other than that, the the rest of the ARPA update, I will await further impact in information from the portal to see who joins us and hopefully have some reimbursement for you next week.
Have the eight towns that did not provide you the adequate information, any of them responded and given you that information? I know one is going to be contacting me very soon.
All right. And we had, last time I checked with Bill, he was out yesterday. We had not received any additional ones. But that doesn't mean they haven't. We just haven't processed them.
Okay.
They, we tend to.
They are still at baseline.
Still at baseline. So when they come in, we tend to process them as batches. So we'll reach out to them. Okay.
Okay, I did follow up on one in particular, but thank you.
Number seventeen, COVID update.
No new updates. Mr. Chairman, again, just monitoring this. I have nothing new to report.
Good.
Eighteen.
Just a couple of very brief items.
County Director.
As Commissioner Stady indicated, Registrar Deeds has notified me that his scheduled appearance on November twenty fourth is in a conflict and he wishes to see if he could come in closer to the middle of December. And if the commission committees, I'm sorry, if the commissioners were interested in rescheduling him, just let them know which date.
Well, we need, we obviously need to reschedule. Whatever you think, I don't, you know.
Very good. Okay, so I'll come back and I'll I'll make a recommendation next week on this.
Would it be possible, may I just suggest that we move maybe the one human resources or even our own office to that day before Thanksgiving? And that way, we're not doubling up and making the other meetings longer. It's what you would.
We, that is an option. And I've got to find out if that's achievable. The other option was to add one to the backend because I believe the last meeting was December, was it the first or the eighth?
The last one is December fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
We go first Norfolk Aggie, eight human HR, and fifteen commissioners' office.
I'll look to do that, Dick. I I don't.
Yeah, I want you to take on them and move that up.
Got to check with the other entity.
Okay, I guess. All right.
I mean, can we move HR up to the day before Thanksgiving? If it's not the largest department.
Yes, I thought, you know, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I want to take this.
That way we're not double enough, you know.
I want to, I don't want to end up here in March and April when our intent is to
No, well.
to intertwine this with the the next budget.
We want that day before Thanksgiving as late as possible, Mr. Chairman. That's the tradition.
We'll be here, though.
We'll be here.
All right. I, when we did it, I didn't, I didn't know it was the day of the Thanksgiving. I didn't.
Just very briefly, and a couple of other small items. We're making progress on the Stoughton project. We're in the final review of the bid package. I've spoken to Nancy. We've elevated this to our top procurement item and hoping to have that product out to bid within the next week. More update on that. Next week, I believe, next Wednesday, we have a trustees meeting with schools. Chairman Little has allowed me to place an item on the agenda that will feature Hilltop Securities, myself. Joe Dory will not be there. He's in conflict, but he's been collaborating with us on the content. But we're going to be looking to speak with the trustees regarding the structural imbalance that the schools have. We think it's a premium time to bring it forward, not just with the new superintendent, but also with Rick Fitzpatrick's replacement starting now. Immerse him in the the issue at hand and hopefully generate some kind of conversation consensus with the trustees about the next steps to tackle that looming and very, very important problem. Joining us during that meeting by Zoom will be Cindy McKerny and her staff from Hilltop Securities. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of the director? Any more questions? Excellent. Number nineteen. topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Do we have anything in all commissions?
I just have one item.
Go ahead.
I believe you each may be aware that Norfolk County has been contacted by a woman named Carol Reed. She is a public health expert out of Needham. She initially sent along some information which you should have received electronically as a concept of her idea for an ARPA grant. I told her that in preparation for her meeting, which I believe is scheduled for next week with you folks, she should expect to have some comparative analysis of where her public health model, in this case, would be relief of substance abuse users as well as additional homeless shelters, how it could work within Norfolk County, what communities has she spoken to that can affirm that this model would be, you know, a working thing. My email prompted a call from her yesterday. I spoke to her for about an hour. When you do speak with her, I think you're going to find somebody who is incredibly intelligent, very passionate about what she's speaking to. But she clearly needed a little bit more education on the apparatus of county government. I believe she was under the impression, for example, that we had staff that could run this program. So after a long conversation, I, excuse me, I think I gave her some advice to circle back with her town manager, in this case would be Needham, to find out if they could host it. And also to circle back on communities that could she could bring into this pilot program. One of the concepts that she was originally thinking about was a county-wide public health initiative. I said, that's very ambitious and would probably likely require substantial surveying to find out what the need is, where the need is, and how much resources each would need. So she's rethinking some of this stuff, but I think when you speak to her next week, I hope you enjoy speaking with her as much as I did. It's very insightful. She brings a perspective that I think is refreshing. And I just want to let you know she's she's moving towards her idea and whether or not she gets there, we'll see. But fascinating idea for the use of ARPA.
Did you say she sent something to us? I didn't get anything.
You did not? I thought I forwarded it to you electronically. I'll do it again.
Can you send?
It was an email. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Let's do that again.
All right. Don't worry. So it's like a republic health nurse? Or is that more or less what she's looking to do?
It's a little bit more comprehensive than that. She she described a program that would aid substance abusive substance abusers across Norfolk County, primarily in the form of social workers who are assisting these users finding care, in some cases, respite, i.e. shelter. It was a program that I think she's mimicking the Department of Mental Health managers at the state level. I think it was called BMAS. I don't pretend to be an expert, but as she explained it to me, it was, it was comprehensive. It did involve staffing and it did involve housing solutions. So the scope and scale are something that she still is trying to figure out, but I think you'll enjoy hearing from her next week.
Okay, no, no problem. I welcome her thoughts and her input.
Yeah, I do, too.
I thought we had said, I could be wrong. I thought we had said as a policy, we were going to be acting on towns and municipal agencies first. And then, for example, like the lady that we talked about with the person from the watershed, the Pontius Valley watershed. Organizations like that would be welcome to apply in round two.
Correct.
So is she jumping the gun or is this something that you feel you just want to get us familiar with her and help her a little bit?
It's the, it's more of the latter, but after my second call with her yesterday, it appeared that initially she thought the county could sponsor the idea.
Okay.
And as she retreated from that, knowing that we don't have the infrastructure to do it.
Right.
We then started talking about where to find a partner to sponsor the idea.
Okay.
And that's when I told her to speak with the town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick in Needham, to see if Needham could anchor the program, possibly look at ways to fund it, i.e. with the other partnering towns. So that portion is not yet ready for prime time. I think she's just going to speak with her. Hopefully she will by next week. But I initially, her thought was ARPA, county money, pay for it. Now we're thinking more along the lines of the communities paying in that want to join the program and having it be anchored by one of the communities. And again, you know, you're a public health official and now you go into your town manager and say, I'd like to have this program. We need to be interested in funding it. Now you're asking for local funding on a program that maybe wasn't on the radar at first. So remains to be seen how things move. But yes, it's much more on the latter. I think her advocacy, her interest, and certainly her passion are quite impressive. And I think you, again, you'll find the conversation quite enriching. Let me talk to her.
That's, that that prompts a a question. I recently read in the Patriot Legion that the great town of Milton and the great administrator were soliciting ideas of ARPA money. Is this something that a solicitor, I mean, this is something that I think some of the others might be, but Milton caught my eye.
Some communities are doing that, yeah.
That she could get involved with. But we can, I'm not a bullshitter coming in, but you know, because this is new. If we can help put them in the right direction, when it comes out the other end and the town wants to sponsor it, we'd be more prepared to answer. Is that something that could be suggested to?
Oh, I think so.
Folks like this?
I think so.
We received a call already from Father Bills and I received a call from Q cap, which I shouldn't have sent them all to appropriate towns, Quincy and Randall.
I think that's exactly the point, Joe, because one of the things that I think she's still trying to pull together is the scope. Originally, what she heard there was a county-wide. And I said, that's a tall task. That's 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 a big program.
I had a couple of weeks ago, an individual in my town said that his well, close associate has runs this program for vets who suffer from PTSD, but the use of horses. It's equine therapy.
Really?
Which is, it's a specific type of program where you treat veterans. They have to be a vet and they use horses. So again, if you want to see if ARPA was used for that, that's well, you know, there's options there. So good to talk about. Good to see.
Okay, last call. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Two fifteen. All right.
Thank you very much. We'll be here next week for a full meeting.